The Town of Farmington. Respecting History, Planning the Future.
Good evening. My name is Paula Ray. I'm the Town Clerk. And by our Town Charter, the Town Clerk opens the annual town meeting. And I'm going to start by reading the warning, and then I will call for nominations for a moderator. Warning: Town of Farmington Annual Town Meeting, April 17, 2017; Referendum, April 27, 2017. Illegal voters of the Town of Farmington, those qualified to vote at town meetings of said town, are hereby warned and notified that the annual town meeting of the Town of Farmington is called for Monday, April 17, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in the Farmington High School Auditorium, 10 Montith Drive, in Farmington, Connecticut, for the following purposes. Number one, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Town Council that the following resolution be adopted; resolved that the town report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, be approved. To consider and act upon the recommendation of the Town Council that the following resolution be adopted; resolved that the budget recommended by the Town Council for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, be approved. Number three, to consider and act upon any other business which may properly come before said meeting. Number four, the moderator shall adjourn this meeting, and the resolution presented under Item 2 of this warning, as submitted to the annual town meeting or as modified thereby, shall become effective only after having been submitted and approved by a vote on voting tabulators of persons qualified to vote in town meetings on Thursday, April 27, 2017. Between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., electors shall vote at their regularly assigned polling places as follows. Electors residing in the first voting district and assigned to polling places 1-1, 1-2, 1-3, and 1-4 shall vote at Irving A. Robbins Middle School, 20 Wolf Pit Road, Farmington, Connecticut. And those assigned to polling place 1-5 shall vote at Westwoods Upper Elementary School, 50 Jutson Lane, Farmington, Connecticut. Electors residing in the second voting district and assigned to polling place 2-6 shall vote at the Community and Senior Center, 321 New Britton Avenue, Unionville, Connecticut. And those assigned to polling place 2-7 shall vote at the Municipal Complex, Montith Drive, Farmington, Connecticut. Voters qualified to vote at town meeting who are not electors shall vote at their respective polling places. Irving A. Robbins Middle School, Westwoods Upper Elementary School, the Community and Senior Center, and the Municipal Complex. Absentee ballots will be available from the Town Clerk's office. Said resolution should be placed upon voting machines under the following heading. Shall the budget for the Town of Farmington presented by the Town Council and recommended by the annual town meeting for fiscal year 2017-18 be approved? Yes, no? Voters approving the resolution shall vote yes, and voters opposing the resolution shall vote no. Date of Farmington, Connecticut, this 18th day of March, 2017, per order of the Farmington Town Council. Now I'd like to ask for nominations for moderator, please.
I'd like to nominate Attorney Christian R. Hoeb.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. All in favor? Voice vote aye? Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Christian Hoeb. Thank you for electing me as moderator for this annual town meeting. Before we begin, I'm going to call on Nancy Nickerson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight, I'd like to describe the procedures we will follow. Your decision tonight on the town's operating budget for 2017-2018 is not final until approved or rejected by voters at the polls, April 27, 2017. Please note that the voters in that referendum cannot change the budget. You can simply vote yes or no. If a majority of those on April 27, 2017 reject the budget, and the number of those voting equals at least 15 percent of the number of registered electors, the Town Council recommends a second budget, which must be lower than the budget rejected at the referendum. That then goes to a second town meeting and a second referendum. If the second recommended budget is rejected at the referendum, the council shall meet and shall adopt a budget for the upcoming fiscal year which shall be lower than the second recommended budget. At this town meeting, we may increase, decrease, or authorize an additional appropriation that is not in the recommended budget presented. Any increase, decrease, or addition of an appropriation shall require the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds majority of the voters voting on such item, provided that there are at least 300 voters voting on such item. Additionally, a motion shall recommend the amounts by which one or more specific appropriations identified by account number or similar designation may be increased or decreased to equal the total amount of the increase or decrease. The recommended budget reflecting any such increases, decreases, or addition of an appropriation that is not in the recommended budget shall be submitted to a referendum. As Mrs. Ray stated, we have three items on the agenda tonight. The first is that the town report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, be approved. Number two is that the budget recommended by the Town Council for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, be approved. And the third is to consider and act upon any other business which may properly come before this meeting. We will consider each agenda item separately. To place each of these items before you, I will call for a motion and for someone else to second it. I will then ask the appropriate town officials to describe the item for informational purposes. I will then recognize anyone who wishes to speak on the motion before us. I ask you go to one of the microphones in the aisles and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments. I ask that you keep your comments to the agenda topic and to present them as briefly as possible. If you have a question, please direct the question to me as moderator and indicate whom you would like to answer it. Please confine your questions to the topic under discussion, and we do not enter into a debate on a specific item. If the comment or question is not germane to the topic at issue, I will simply rule it out of order, and we will proceed. I will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting to a referendum to be held at the regular polling places on April 27, 2017, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at the conclusion of these motions. Are there any questions? Questions? Anyone? All right. Motion number one. May I have a motion to move the first item contained in the warning that the town report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, be approved?
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Does anyone wish to be heard on motion number one regarding the warning that the town report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, be approved? Anyone wish to be heard? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Motion two. May I have a motion to move the second item contained in the warning that the budget recommended by the Town Council for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, be approved? I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second? And a second. Oh, second. Second. Thank you. I will now call upon Nancy Nickerson, Chair of the Town Council, Kathleen Egan, Town Manager, Christopher Fagan, Chair of the Board of Education, and Kathleen Greeter, Superintendent of Schools, to begin their presentations. Thank you.
Just right here. Down. And if you go, just keep on going down. But if you make a mistake, you can just go back. Right up. That's it.
I'm here tonight to present the Farmington Town Council budget for the 2017-18 fiscal year. The budget that we are presenting tonight has an increase of .9 to the mill rate, a 3.5 percent increase in the tax rate, an increase to the average household assessment of $232,000 or $209 a year. Our budget deliberations and decisions were based on our strategic plan, maintaining excellent services, and the current state of Connecticut's fiscal crisis. The tax rate this year is 3.5 percent. Although this is a higher tax increase than the last couple of years, it is a direct result of the governor's budget that reduces the state funding by almost 30 percent, or $1.7 million. If the town received the same state funding as last year, the tax rate with the town manager's original budget would have been 2.3 percent. The total recommended budget for fiscal year 2017-18 is $102,747,135, which is an increase of $2,147,420 or a 2.13 percent above the current budget. This year, our grant list grew by .59 percent, which is the fourth year of steady growth in town. Even though the state's significant budget challenges affect our community, Farmington continues to experience steady growth. Over the past year, the landing of Farmington opened a beautiful, state-of-the-art, $13-million assisted living community. Pietro Rosa TBM acquired New England Air Foil Products, which plans to invest $10 million and add 100 new jobs over the next five years. And FIP Construction completed renovations for their new facility on New Britton Avenue. The Upson Nut Building Company in Unionville was completely renovated and restored, adding 10 new businesses and 64 new jobs to the area. Small businesses such as Vivid Hughes, Happiest Ink, Soma Movement, and Green Tales Market are growing. Butchers &amp; Bakers and Tap Rock Beer Bar &amp; Refuge joined a budding restaurant scene. And the Farmington Avenue Medical Corridor is thriving. The future holds promise for redevelopment opportunities in Farmington Center, and several of our manufacturing plants are planning expansions. All signs point to continued growth for our town here in Farmington. I'm proud to report that we continue to have a AAA Moody's rating. This is a result of stable governing body, financial management stability, a strong tax base, funding our reserve account appropriately, and a commitment to funding our pension in a responsible manner. This allows our town to have a better bonding interest rate when borrowing. As of November 2016, only 17 towns out of 169 towns here in the state had a AAA Moody's rating. Farmington continues to be strong economically with the tax base, the residential tax base at 73 percent and the commercial at 27 percent. The economic growth in our town is evident by the consistent growth in our grant list over the past four years. The growth in personal property, which is business equipment and furnishings, demonstrates that businesses continue to thrive in Farmington, and it is a desirable community to live and work. Excellent town services. We have excellent town services and an excellent school system. We are extremely proud of the services that we offer our residents, from curbside leaf pickup, bulk pickup, to our nationally acclaimed school district. The Town of Farmington wholeheartedly believes that volunteers are the true fabric of our community. We continually seek ways to recognize the time, effort, and the talent that many volunteers donate to our community. From elected and appointed boards and commission members to the volunteer fire department, this town cares for its community with its strong volunteer base. When volunteers come together, this town does amazing things. We recently dedicated the Live Fire Burn Training Facility. This million-dollar project was the result of the efforts of countless volunteers in our community who worked to raise funds for a critical fire training need in the region. Farmington's volunteers make this a wonderful community in which to live, work, and play. Thank you to all of you who contribute and who volunteer in the community. Throughout this budget process, the Town Council was committed to maintaining current services and to fund the town and the Board of Education at levels that would enable service levels to remain at high standards. We also stress that this budget would not be able to support many or, if any, initiatives, new initiatives. The Town Council believes that we have a responsibility to bring a fiscally responsible budget to the citizens in Farmington. This budget accomplishes that goal, but the state of Connecticut's fiscal crisis should be recognized as a significant driver in this budget this year. Over the past five years, the Town of Farmington has made a significant investment in the town's capital improvement needs, allocating almost $14 million. These expenditures have enabled the town to make improvements in the areas of communication and technology, infrastructure, including roads, maintenance and equipment, building improvements and renovation, energy and green initiatives, and emergency operations. This year, capital projects will also ensure compliance with certain statutory requirements and provide funding to carry out our strategic plan. There is no recommended bonding for the fiscal year 2017-18, other than a potential Farmington High School building project that will be a separate referendum and will come in June. The recommended 2017-18 budget continues the town's commitment to providing and funding exceptional services to our residents and our businesses. The recommended budget increases our total expenditure by 2.1 million or 2.13 percent. This equates to a 3.5 tax rate increase. The recommended budget was built to maintain current services levels for both the town and the Board of Education despite a significant reduction in funding from the state. The governor's proposed budget decreases the grants from the state to our town by almost 30 percent, $1.7 million. At this time, I have no additional information on the impact to Farmington on the state's $1.5 billion deficit or the shifting of the teachers' pension funding to the town. Regardless of the state budget outcome, Farmington is steadfast in our commitment to the high-quality services for our residents, and we will continue to practice fiscal responsibility. Farmington is a great town to live and work. We remain well-positioned in terms of economic development, exceptional education, and providing high-level services, even in the most difficult and uncertain budget times. Now I'll call on the Town Manager and then the Board of Ed to give you the details of the budget.
Members of the public, I present for your review the Town Council's recommended budget for fiscal year 17-18. The recommended budget has already gone through several iterations. For the municipal budget, it began at the departmental level with requests coming to the Town Manager in January. To meet the budget target range set forth by the Town Council, I decreased $721,000 from the budget that was requested by my departments. The reduction maintained current service levels but did not allow for any real expansion of service. During the budget deliberations last month, the Town Council made further reductions. The Board of Education budget was reduced by $150,000, and the town budget was reduced by $50,000. The general fund contribution to the capital budget was decreased by $330,000. The current state of Connecticut fiscal crisis should be recognized as a significant driver in this budget process. The governor's proposed budget has a considerable negative impact on the Town of Farmington. Grants from the state are proposed to be decreased by 29.14 percent or a decrease of $1,704,789 in funding. The governor has also proposed that municipalities fund one-third of the annual state teachers' retirement fund contribution. The state has historically paid the entire liability. Farmington's proposed payment is $3,343,850. This Town Council's recommended budget includes the reduction of $1,700,000 in state grants, but based on the information that we have received to date, this recommended budget does not include any contribution to the state's teacher retirement fund. Even with the significant reduction of grant funding, this budget continues to fund accounts at levels that will enable service levels to remain at high standards. Expenditures. The general fund budget includes the recommended spending for the town, for the school system, for debt service, and for capital improvements. The recommended budget for Westwoods Golf Course, the Recreation Fund, and solid waste collection and disposal are also included for your review. The total recommended budget for fiscal year 17-18 is $102,747,135, an increase of $2,147,420 or 2.13 percent above the current budget. The recommended town expenditure increases 2.24 percent. The recommendation maintains current service levels but does not allow for any real expansion of service. The recommended town budget is $28,860,794, which is 2.24 percent above the current expenditure. Highlights of the town operation by category include the following. General administration has decreased by 1.97 percent. Public safety has increased by 2.78 percent. Public works have increased by 4.95 percent. Community and recreation, 4.58 percent. Other by 4.05 percent. For a total budget of $28,860,794. I've also separated the budget by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increases for each object are as follows. Salaries are increased by 2.25 percent. Benefits by 5.29 percent. Supplies by .04 percent. Equipment has decreased by 17.62 percent. Contractual is increased by .47 percent. And utilities has increased by 3.48 percent. In summary, the Town Council's recommended budget is $28,860,794, which is an increase of $631,423 or 2.24 percent above the current expenditure. The debt group of accounts includes appropriations to make principal and interest payments on the town's long-term bond debt. The recommended amount for the next fiscal year is $7,315,700. Funds are included to pay the short-term interest cost on a projected $42 million bond anticipation note that will be sold in April of 2017. These notes are being issued to finance the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. Special services. The refuse collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid and bulky waste generated by town residents and the town's landfill operation. The budget proposes no rate increase. The annual fee will remain at $235 per household. The recommended general fund appropriation to support the capital improvements is $2,398,000. Even though the general fund appropriation for next year does not quite meet our capital improvement policy funding provision, it should be considered in conjunction with our historical funding practice. Over the last three years, the general fund appropriation for capital improvements has exceeded the funding policy which has allowed us to make significant progress towards meeting the town's capital improvement needs. Shown here is a list of the recommended capital projects. There is no recommended bonding for fiscal year 17-18, other than a potential Farmington High School building project that will be a separate referendum item outside the budget The Water Pollution Control Authority budget shows no increase. The Board of Education account includes a recommended appropriation of $64,172,641, an increase of 2.37 above the current year budget. I will now call on Chris Fagan, who will discuss the Board of Education budget, Chair of the Board of Education.
Which one do I? This one? Down arrow. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Town Council Chairwoman Nancy Nickerson, Chris Hoeb, fellow members of the Town Council and the members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight, along with our Superintendent Kathy Greeter, to present the Farmington Board of Education 2017-2018 recommended budget. On behalf of the entire Farmington Board of Education, I'd like you to know that the recommended budget as presented to you tonight represents the dedicated and collaborative efforts and considered judgment of our Superintendent Kathy Greeter, her administrators, the district teachers, and my fellow board members. And I'd just like to thank everyone for their efforts in putting together this budget. As you're all aware, these are uncertain times we are operating in, and we, as a board, are cognizant of the uncertainties related to the ongoing source funding at the state level and the impact these changes have on communities like Farmington, its families, and its students. Against that backdrop, we undertook this budget process knowing it would be difficult to make any provision for substantial increases in expenditures on education. And you can rest assured that there were certainly items that teachers, administrators, and board members would have wanted that never found their way into this budget. And trust me when I say that while this was knowingly a challenge, we all accepted this challenge. As an innovative learning organization, the mission and vision of the Farmington School District is deeply committed to a pathway of continuous improvement. Our teaching and learning process is based on the collaborative interactions among students, educators, parents, and families, and emphasizes the importance of clear expectations, rigorous standards-led curriculum, inspired instruction, personal effort, and engaged relationships leading to high levels of achievements for all learners. We collectively, as a board and administration, are ultimately guided in our efforts by the fundamental principle we call the vision of the graduate, whereby Farmington graduates will acquire an understanding of the essential knowledge and skills in the core academic disciplines and develop the thinking and learning skills needed to meet the challenges of local, national, and global citizenship in a rapidly changing world. The slide behind me sort of highlights some of these core learning areas and learning skills, and they involve critical thinking and reasoning, communication and collaboration, problem-solving and innovation, self-direction, and resourcefulness. As Kathy indicated, and you'll note from the finer line item details that were presented to you by Superintendent Greeter in just a moment, the board has approved an increase of only 2.37 to its budget, or $1,486,566, to bring the total approved budget to $64,172,641 for the 2017-2018 year. And while I think we can all reasonably agree that this is a responsible budget on its face, the austerity underlying the approved budget is most certainly reflected in the fact that of the proposed 2.37 increase, almost the entire portion that is directly related to contractual obligated salaries and benefits. Nonetheless, I want to assure you, on behalf of myself and the entire board, that we and the administration remain fully committed to extending and building upon the value proposition of the educational experience here in Farmington. I think it goes without saying that Farmington is one of the best and highest-performing school districts, not only in the state but also the nation. Our schools, administrators, faculty, and students are routinely recognized for their educational achievements. It is one of the very reasons, myself included, why each of us live in this community and are proud to call ourselves residents of Farmington. I think you will find, as we go through the budget in detail, that this approved budget not only allows us to continue to achieve our expected high levels of excellence in challenging and difficult times, but also represents a considered thoughtful and fiscally responsible approach, given the space we are operating in today and the uncertainty of our future. So thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening. I will now introduce Superintendent Greeter, who will walk through the budget in greater detail. Kathy?
This year's budget was achieved through a collaborative effort across the school district and in partnership with the Board of Education, placing a high priority on zero-based budgeting, maintaining services, and a long-term approach to finding efficiencies and cost savings in all aspects of our fiscal plan. Fiscal limitations due to the proposed state-level reductions were significantly considered in this budget, and we did not achieve what we had planned on achieving in the budget for the coming year as a result of that reality. Our vision of the graduate outlines the core body of knowledge and thinking and learning skills all Farmington students master prior to graduation. Improvement efforts and our financial plan in Farmington are aligned to the vision of the graduate, which places Farmington at the forefront of innovation in teaching, learning, student outcomes, and students as leaders of their own learning at the regional, state, and national levels. On this slide, you can see examples of our students, K-12, actively engaged in learning experiences that are highly authentic and student-centered, all aligned to our vision of the graduate. The recommended budget we present to you was collaboratively developed to address Farmington's financial difficulties.
The recommended budget we present to you was collaboratively developed to address Farmington's compelling mission. Our mission was designed to directly align to our goals and vision of the graduate, creating a strong through-line from our mission and goals to all classrooms, all students, and all schools. The recommended budget maintains core programming aligned to the Board of Education's five-year goals, vision of the graduate, and mission in the areas outlined on this slide. Innovative programming, K-12, elementary world language programming, supports for students' social-emotional well-being, continued curriculum development aligned to our vision of the graduate and priorities, a focus on staff and faculty development, a focus on maintaining technology-integrated instruction in all classrooms, and class size levels in accordance with Board of Ed policy. We have much to be proud of in Farmington. Farmington continues to be highlighted at the regional, state, and national levels for excellence in teaching and learning and student outcomes. This reinforces Farmington's investment in our schools. I will highlight a few notable examples. FHS students were invited to present at Harvard and a Boston startup company on organizational improvement. The P-21 magazine, Farmington Public Schools, continues to be featured on the P-21 magazine, which is viewed at national and international levels. We have now engaged Farmington students as contributors to the P-21 magazine. Farmington has been recognized for its focus on student voice through panorama videos viewed at national and international levels. Recently, two Farmington teachers have been named outstanding educators in Connecticut by the CAEA, and at this year's Harvard Economic Challenge, FHS earned first place competing against elite public and private schools. These are just a few of the notable highlights. Through the community's investment in our schools, we continue to lead the way in education. Here are some examples of our favorable state rankings when it comes to expenditures. There is a relationship between the accomplishment slide and the ranking slide you see here. Excellence in education and fiscal responsibility and management. The rankings are based on Connecticut's 169 towns, with one spending the most and 169 spending the least. Employee benefits, 148th. Farmington continues to partner with employees and the town on a healthcare design that provides quality healthcare benefits that engage employees as consumers. In turn, we have extraordinary trending in claims. Purchase services, 125th. This ranking reflects the excellent work of our business office through regional purchasing that has led to cost-effective purchasing throughout the district. Special education, 134th. We continue to provide exemplary programming in special services in a fiscally responsible manner. School-based administration is 148th. Farmington administrators, on average, supervise, develop, and evaluate more teachers than similar districts. This is truly impressive when we look at the state's teacher evaluation guidelines and requirements, increased legislative demands, and our own internal expectations of administrators. And then general administration is 168th. Given our outstanding outcomes coupled with our favorable expenditure rankings, here are some specific examples of how we focus each day on finding efficiencies through cost containment and avoidance while providing a quality education for Farmington students. This slide provides examples of our focus on cost containment and avoidance. Here are some additional examples of cost containment measures to address diminishing support from the state and federal levels. The first driver of the budget is salaries. As you can see, this accounts for 67.92 percent of the budget and reflects collaborative negotiations between various associations and the Board of Education. The 100 series reflects a 2.69 percent increase over this year's budget. Each year, we carefully study staffing levels to address needs and find efficiencies when possible. This budget has examples of staffing efficiencies, as well as moving staffing from volatile grants to the operating budget in a phased-in approach. We also are addressing increased mandates and maintaining services, as well as programming for our students. The second major driver is employee benefits. This account provides for 100 percent of expected paid claims and administration of our employee health insurance. We are proud to continue to experience employee costs of healthcare services below industry average. The increase in this series is driven by stop-loss insurance increases due to catastrophic claims. You can see the life and long-term disability costs on this slide as well. The 200 series accounts for 14.66 percent of our total budget. There is a 3.06 percent increase in this account. This slide provides an overview of our best practices approach to self-insurance management. We have included some examples of how we provide excellent healthcare benefits to our employees while remaining fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of Farmington. It is important to note that in this budget, the increase in employee benefits is driven primarily by stop-loss insurance costs due to a limited number of large claims, while overall claims are trending well. The 300 series includes varied items. It accounts for 13.86 percent of the total budget. It reflects a 0.51 percent increase. This is an area of significant cost avoidance and containment through strong contract negotiations for utilities, fuel, and copiers. It also reflects a focus on educating our students in district, providing excellent programming in district for students with special needs. Here are some examples of cost avoidance and containment in the 300 series. All of these examples are a reflection of the hard work of faculty, staff, and the Board of Education, as well as our partnership with the town of Farmington. The 400 supply series reflects a 0.49 percent increase and accounts for 2.62 percent of the total budget. This account provides for facilities used in swimming and ice hockey competitions and for the purchase of a wide range of items such as instructional, health custodial, computer, and testing supplies. The 500 series reflects equipment requests. It is a 0.55 percent of the total budget. There is a 3.61 percent increase for equipment. I do want to note that this is an area that has experienced cuts in the past, which have impacted the pace of our technology plan implementation. We have worked in partnership with the Board of Education and Town Council to build a technology infrastructure and capacity over several years, and we are now moving to replacing and repurposing Chromebooks. Here are several examples of how the school district has focused on strategic cost allocation and excellence in technology programming to achieve an integration of technology in all classrooms throughout the school district. I'll highlight a couple items on this slide to illustrate our strategic approach. We worked out trade-ins and sellbacks with vendors for unused and replacement devices and parts, and we use the credit for new purchases. We redeployed energy conservation utility to monitor computer power. This resulted in a reanalysis of our infrastructure and an estimated $80,000 savings to the district by ever-source. Dues and fees are the last series, the 600 series. It reflects a 0.40 percent of the total budget with a 0.12 percent increase. This includes memberships to organizations and liability and property insurance. The next slide is an overview of the major budget drivers that reflect a 2.37 percent over the 2016-17 school district budget, all of which were reviewed during this presentation. This is a unique budget year for our community. We are experiencing unprecedented proposed reductions in state and federal financial support to our school district and town. At the same time, the state continues to increase unfunded mandates that stretch our resources. Even with these challenges, we remain committed to providing a world-class education that enables all students to achieve academic and personal excellence, exhibit persistent effort, and live as resourceful, inquiring, and contributing global citizens. Farmington continues to lead the way in excellence in teaching and learning, as well as student outcomes and achievements. Our financial plan supports and advances these efforts. We are a school district that provides an exemplary education in a community that supports innovation, continuous improvement, and excellence. Although fiscal limitations are impacting the rate at which we achieve our vision of the graduate, it does not deter us from that vision. We have taken a long-term, strategic, and effective approach to cost containment, avoidance, and savings so that resources are aligned directly to our mission, core beliefs, and goals at the student level. This is evidenced by our favorable expenditure rankings and the many cost containment avoidance and management examples shared in this presentation. We take great pride in implementing a strategic approach to cost containment through collaborative negotiations, partnerships, strong contract negotiations, ongoing reviews of programming and staffing to realize efficiencies, knowing that it is essential to do so on behalf of the taxpayers of Farmington, especially with diminishing financial support from the state and federal levels. Our student, faculty, school, and district accomplishments, continuous improvement efforts, and high-quality programming have contributed to a nationally recognized education here in Farmington. This recommended budget includes the resources necessary to maintain the value of the taxpayers' investment in the Farmington schools and provides a high-quality, results-oriented education that ensures that all students will leave productive and rewarding lives. The recommended 2017-18 budget is responsive to our community and to our students. Thank you.
The grand list. The grand list is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate account shows a 0.34 percent increase. The personal property account shows a 3.80 percent increase, and the motor vehicles account shows a 1.07 percent increase. In summary, the grand list increased by 0.59 percent, or $21,138,543. Revenues, grants, charges, and others. I've broken down revenues into eight categories. Other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, and Westwood's Golf Course. As stated earlier, state and federal grants have been reduced by 29.14 percent, or $1,704,789. In summary, revenues are $7,901,702, a decrease of $1,633,502, or 17.13 percent. Recommended tax and mill rate. The recommended general fund budget will require a property tax rate of 26.68 mills, an increase of 0.90 mills, and a tax increase of 3.50 percent, or $209.57 for the average homeowner with a house assessed at $232,074. This concludes our formal budget presentation. Please remember to vote on Thursday, April 27, 2017, at your regular polling place. Thank you.
May I impose upon someone in that corner to ask Mrs. Brenneman to come in and just report how many voters are here this evening? Would you be so kind? And while we're doing that, I'm going to remind everyone, if you have a question or comment, please come to the microphone in the aisle, state your name and your address, and these are questions or comments pertaining to the second motion, the recommended budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017. Thank you. Forty-five. Thank you very much, forty-five. Okay. So I'm going to open up to any questions or comments from the public and ones which to be heard on the budget. Yes, sir. If you could be so kind as to step up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and we'll go from there.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Brian Linderoth for Chelsea Place in Farmington. I just have a general question. If someone wanted more information about the school budget, I don't ask any questions here, but if you wanted to find out more about the details of teacher headcount, student-teacher ratios, year-over-year, is that available?
Do you want to?
It's available in our budget book. You could pick one up at the office if you'd like.
I could have done that. I could have done that. Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Questions, comments? Left, right? Anyone wish to be heard over here? Yes, sir.
David Godders, 17 Crosswood Road. With the anticipation of the state not funding the pensions, what's the process or mechanism you go through to address that shortfall? And I don't know if that's a Board of Ed question or if that's a general town budget question, so.
If I could just have clarity on your question. Are you asking if they shift the liability to the town?
Yes.
Right now, we are pretty confident that that's not going to happen this year. There's some legal things that are going on, whether they're legally allowed to do it, and some various things. But that said, if they did shift it to us, there would be a couple of different options that could take place. One is that the town council could lower expenses, and we could have the same budget that we approve when we approved the budget. Another option could be that the council, depending on how much money was shifted to the council's budget, the town has a right to send out supplemental tax bills, so that could also happen. The town council could, if they were going to send out supplemental tax bills, they could run another budget process and run another budget process and could do a combination of a bunch of, like, lower expenses, do some different things, and then send out supplemental tax bills. So there are some different options, but right now, we're pretty confident from everything that we've heard that this year, that shifting is not going to take place.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or a comment on motion number two? Anyone from the town wish to be heard? Council? Anyone? Board of Ed? Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn motion number two to April 27, 2017? And a second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. We now move to number three, which is to consider and act upon any other business which may properly come before this meeting. Anyone from the council wish to be heard? Board of Ed? Okay. Anything else? Thank you, everyone, for your participation this evening.
[inaudible]
Oh. I thought I already did that with the last one, but do we want another motion to adjourn? You need another one?
[inaudible]
Yeah, I thought I did that.
You did the motion.
Okay. I move to adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn. Anybody? Second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.[1757.22]